It's in the county farm candy.
Yeah, I checked this morning. Just to see and that. Nothing.
One guy to reach out and that's why he couldn't farm an organ.
Because it says you can't.
I don't think that's fair.
One person called about running it.
I still have a week, so.
Yeah.
They'll all come in the last day.
Yeah, because I think they do Monday at four, so.
Welcome, welcome back stranger. Good morning.
You decided to show up again?
Well, of course, I turned probably.
Looking a little gimped yet.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's it was my week's last Thursday, so my surgery.
Wow. That long.
I think you're doing pretty good for just that.
So yeah, I can tell it's there, but. Not getting a cane or anything, so.
Well, you're not that easy not to kick your husband, you know.
You know, I opened the door at the hip.
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah, slamming the door into him, that's why we figured it out. But it wasn't until an hour before surgery I figured that out. If I'd have figured that out two weeks prior to that, maybe I would have had to go through two weeks of agony. They kept asking me if I fell. No, I did not fall. I did not.
What the, would you actually have done surgery?
Oh, I have a pin down my. If my femur is fractured. So I have a pin down here, one across here, one over the femur.
Yeah, don't sound like any fun.
And no, it wasn't.
No rod or just pins?
Well, it's a it's a nail. I don't know.
Put a rod in the femur?
It it's a. They don't call it a rod. They called it a nail. But it's probably similar to a rod. It's gonna stay there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, now you're bionic. You got moving parts that aren't original.
I got one side that's gonna be stronger than the other.
Starting to get emails on generative AI. Just creating videos and audio files about that basically for next year's election cycle. Do you guys want me to get on agenda and cover some of that? Well, maybe not for your piece, but um it's. Before the election itself, somebody creates video of Biden saying, hey, we're going to go through. And so we're starting to see some of that come through on heat news now. Here's what we can do. And that's what the latest alert was. It might be boring.
Is it smell or where do you know?
It's it's generative AI, so we did that with the text, but now the video and sound weren't weren't. And that looks real, it's gonna be so.
Well, they got an app out now. You can put on your phone that if you can take a picture and make them all naked in it.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it's. I read about it yesterday. Somebody had it.
There's all kinds of it's generative AI. Anyway. So maybe we wait a few months and then. Yeah, they're saying for next year's election, it's like, are you sure it's gonna be a problem?
It's gonna be a lot of problems.
We gotta find somebody to run, yeah.
Yeah. Good. There, look it up here.
That's weird.
It was very foggy.
It's such a dark.
A night.
I'm not used to that pitch black.
I have to work here. Work over at my shop for about an hour this morning before getting come here. Five, five, five thirty, it was barely seated on the trees.
Chickens were still sitting on the roost.
Were they?
Yeah.
Mine were too.
So evidently, it's early.
We were too early.
Yeah. The guineas are still up in the tree. They were squawking.
Up the tree?
They get up thirty, thirty, forty feet. They go way up.
Chickens will get in the tree too, but not that high.
Whenever the coyotes are around, you can hear the guineas. They squawk.
On the tree?
Yeah. Except for sixteen about this big around in the building.
What are that? Oh, eggs?
No. Babies. She's hatched. I don't know if I took a picture on this phone.
They're pretty tiny. I don't know what you call them.
Oh, yeah, they are tiny.
Or like a nickel or a core.
They're so cute.
They're just.
Oh, little guys.
Yeah.
Do you call them chicks? I mean, or what what do you call it?
I call them.
Okay.
Stand, do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public discussion.
I would like to get back on the agenda for a class C road. It's been two months and absolutely nothing's been done by the secondary road crew again, or the department. The secondary road has abandoned that road. I'd like to get a crossing for winter. My option runs out in a week, a little over a week on my bridge. I'd like just go with a class C road that you guys can do. Don't need the county engineer. Do a damn thing about it, because that's exactly what he's done in the last two months.
All right, put it on the agenda for next week.
Put on the.
Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing no other public discussion?
That's all I've got.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated September nineteenth?
I'll move.
Snack. Stacker. Any discussion?
I had a question. What's the? You approve secondary road claims?
Oh, um, yeah.
There's trucks.
These trucks came in, and so he has to. Because of the large amount, we didn't do a hand.
Okay. Just one question.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the, did you see him in the packet?
Well, I looked at this sheet. I didn't go into the other, the other page.
Any other questions? If not. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion carried unanimously. Secondary road claims in our packet. Any questions? Do we need Doug Doug to explain anything?
On order for a while.
Well, we canceled them once.
Right.
Yeah, five fifty-one. You know, I looked at them the other day.
I think they got higher priced as we went.
I'm sure they did.
Do I have a motion to approve secondary road claims?
So moved.
Motion by Stacker. I'll second it. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried unanimously. Acknowledged safety committee minutes. Any questions? Seeing none, let the record show that we acknowledged them. Wellness committee?
Give me if I'll dug now or later.
I mean, just well calling them. Wellness committee. Everybody had a chance to look at it.
And the five P did not happen. That was can.
That was canceled?
Yeah.
Hey Doug, we're ready for you to come up if you want.
Um, thanks. No, no participation or?
It was because of the week.
Okay.
There was not that many people signed up for it. They just decided it would be a better.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let the record show that we acknowledged the wellness committee minutes. And we are up to the discussion decision to amend the county engineer's contract.
Amendment motion.
Yeah. Amendment motion made on August eight.
This would be because of the letter that he wrote us last week. He felt the motion was ambiguous and could be interpreted to mean that the engineer accepted the reference language and he did not accept any amended language, so. Thought it would be a good idea for the board to review and clarify these minutes. Think, did we talk about this after Roger last week? Was it before?
I think we talked about it during our discussion.
Yeah, I thought, yeah, so I would have been gone for Roger. Amy, do you want to repeat that you had gone back through the?
Yeah. So I wasn't sure if if I had made a mistake in what the. The motion was, so I listened to it and. What I typed was pretty much exactly what Carter had first made the motion and then later on added to add the per.
Per acceptance.
Acceptance, yeah, so if the motion was made. What I typed in minutes was how the motion was reviewed, so. If anything needs to be changed, it has to be.
Really, it's. I I don't know, I guess. Don't feel it's unclear, but. It would just be a change of. Instead of per using a different word that maybe is more clear. But. I don't know, as long as we understand what it means and the engineer understands what it means. I mean, I don't know.
Morning, Dick. Morning, Doug.
Yeah, I guess I don't. I don't know how else we would clarify. Those units. We've, Doug, for your information, we were talking about your letter from last week and. The agenda item for. Amending the motion made on August eighth, but. I guess. What I mean, in your letter, it says you feel the motion's ambiguous and could be interpreted to mean that the engineer accepted the reference language. I. I guess, do you have a suggestion on how to say that differently?
No.
Per acceptance?
I mean, I think we clarified it in a couple of meetings with it, but. Per acceptance, that would be. Upon your acceptance or and which has not happened, so that's that's just the board written. Upon approval of of the other half, the contractor holder being engineer. I mean, I think that's. Fairly clear, rather than making a motion. I I don't know. I don't know what.
Have you had any members of the public reach out to you? Saying they did not understand the action that was taken?
Yes.
Could you direct them to contact their representative? Because I have not heard that from anyone.
Okay.
I just want to clear. There's no agreement.
Right.
Right.
By county engineer on any. And.
I think anyone who is uncertain on that could watch the videos of our board meetings and could easily understand that.
Do you want me to put anything? The current event today's minutes.
Could clarify it in today's moments. As far as.
If I just write.
Being we held discussion. Discuss most held, um, motion was clarified that.
I I don't know how many different ways you can say that it's conditional on acceptance of the engineer. We could say the engineer has not accepted the terms from that motion. But.
Yes, I'll.
Would you like it in the minutes that you have not accepted those terms, Doug, or?
I want to make certain that I have not accepted anything. Twenty years from today. Minutes should be written in a way that. Twenty years from today, fifty years from today. They're clear. When I go back to read. Minutes from. And then thirty nineteen hundreds on roads. It. It helps when they are clear. There's no way to interpret it of one way.
Well, the.
That's what I would like is an interpretation. There's no way to. Termit, but. This way.
What if I just put in there, discussion was held with the county engineer? To clarify the August eighth, two thousand twenty-three motion regarding the county engineer's contract. That the county engineer has not accepted the change of the provisions. To the contract. Something on that, I'm good.
Yeah, that's fine.
Would that be okay, Doug? Do you want to say?
It's, I mean, it's board's decision.
That's fine.
Yeah, I don't have any issues with that.
Okay.
Do we want a motion to take no action or just leave it as consensus?
It's just be in the record in the way it was taken, because technically you can't make a motion to do anything.
We can take action to not amend that motion, but. It.
It's a discussion item, so we don't.
If it's if it's in the minutes, good enough, that's fine. I didn't think it was necessary to begin with.
Okay, so we're up to construction of the road right away.
Uh, there are no requests for construction of the road right away.
I have a question. How are we coming on the bridge south of type?
The construction of that bridge, they have formed the deck, they're tying steel. So they're getting close to point. Yes. The disaffirmation. Board just put us in the agenda next week for Mr. Miller that he wants to request that his rule. Change to class C. So it's gonna be on for discussion next week again, so so you don't get broadside. Okay. But you know, it's gonna be on. Uh, other discussion, I guess, um, resurfacing projects, they have been completed. We are now opening those roads, taking down detours. Talked a little bit about that bridge south of type, the Algonquin Airport, they are started, they have started construction, so shortly. That road will be closed, so it might already be closed. I have not been out there today. And then DOT project South and Fent and everything is complete on that and that is back open. Um, I've. We've interviewed for the ledge our shop. We're looking at some background on some candidates there. Going to be interviewing some transfer station candidates this week. Uh, gravel roads, we had some welcome raining yesterday, today, tomorrow. Thursday, if needed, and Friday, if needed, we are going to be maintaining gravel roads. Some of them will be mainly maintained twice just to get over them, get a cut, good cut on both sides, get things spread out. Um, we got one piece of equipment that's down, bankrupt maintainer. However, we do have a spare machine, so that uh spare machine is being used in that district. Um, I have plans to purchase a snow blower, snow pusher and forks for skid loader. The snow blower, snow pusher would be used out in our mechanic shop. Snow blower is about eleven thousand dollars, the pusher's four thousand. And skid loader is about twelve hundred. We got skid loaders for. We have one set of skin or one set of. Forks for the skid loader, but we're seeing that both of them are being used. The forks are being used on both of our machines, so that would just be an additional. Um, I guess I'm just asking if the board has concerns with that before I actually ordered that.
Is the snow blower only going to be used at the shop or is it gonna be?
Mechanic shop, yes. And the pusher at the mechanic shop, just for that area. We're seeing. Our Algonquin shop. Uh, foreman goes and completes. I'll go on a shop. Port house added on the. EMA building. The EMS, whichever building's name is. And so it delays it just a little bit out there, so. And then our mechanic shop roof needs to be replaced, so I did sign quote to replace that, and that's a. An eighty thousand, eighty-two thousand dollar. I think that's gonna be coming through. Other than that, I do not have any.
That one don't have rocks on the roof, so does it?
It has rocks. We will take the ballast off and put self-adhere.
That's better.
My, yeah, my opinion, it's it's better. Last just a little bit longer, but I would never need to patch anything. I mean, it's not more simple than that.
I did remember the public reach out to me. Can I stop in your office after you grab a copy of the gravel crushing bids we got this year?
We missed one bid.
Oh, we've only received one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I'm. I had a person that asked for it, but if you don't copy.
Okay, that's the only one, yeah. Okay, sounds good.
Anything else for Doug? Thank you, Doug.
You're better.
Thanks.
Upon. I think my writing's bad, but I can't figure it out.
It's tiny too, isn't it? It looks like Jim, maybe. But that's it. That's that's as far as I go. The one above it's not that much better.
Well, it's two initials.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah. I get that two initials, Zach, Lou, and Tom, but McLaren Engineering, I have no idea who wrote that.
Dan.
Not even get Dan out of that.
You love those signatures, don't you?
It looks like a Jade. Wow.
Should go in the record. It should at least know who signed it. That all looks like Dan is.
Oh, yeah, that's definitely Dan.
Marge. Tell me how that's Dan.
It looks like a stick person.
Yeah.
It looks like a flower. A a flower.
I thought it was sunflower.
I was thinking his name was Anderson or Reagan.
I don't know.
It's that's definitely Dan, though.
It's definitely Dan.
I mean, he's the engineer on the project, so I guess that should be.
Awesome.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, well, what's the last name?
We.
We.
Oh, yeah, second W.
I see it's obvious.
I mean, yeah, it's.
Looks more like winner or something like that.
No, it's Weidemeyer.
Josh, you're unapproved. You know, you're you're neutral in this. What does that look like?
Well, I can see the A in the end, the B not so much. The W is definitely there.
The W I can get.
There there's an I in there. I can I can tell that. A dot above.
Marge, I'm ready. Now that we.
Laughed about the signatures.
Yeah. The first one that we have in front of us is change order six for DD sixty seven one. It is signed by the contractor and the engineer.
And this would be the last one. This is the final rectification of quantities.
Net change is forty thousand eight hundred ninety-eight, ninety-nine.
Yep.
Any questions from the board? If not, I've entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Stacker, second by.
I'll second.
Raptor. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously.
And then the pay estimate is the sub final, so we'd only have one more after this.
Okay, in front of us, we have the pay app eight for DD sixty sub one. Amount due is seventy-three thousand three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. It is to Zachary Louvins, and McClure Engineering signs it, and it is Weeden Meyer. Any questions on the pay app? Seeing none?
Or this is part of, um. Project, when was this project done?
It was, it was started hmm, last fall.
Last fall, yeah.
So there's a little bit of work that got done before, before the end of the year, but then most of it was during the summer.
Okay.
And then after, after this here, um. I believe when I talked to Dan, I think he said they had the final pay estimate and stuff put together, but then they'll go through. And put all the documents together for the completion hearing, and we'll have that, and then.
Okay.
Close out the project.
Yeah, project's actually been done for a little bit, most of it.
Yeah, a little while here, um, it's all been televised, so, I mean, overall, it's all looked really good, so. We've got videos for all that.
I would entertain a motion to approve pay app eight for DD sixty sub one.
So moved.
Motion by Stecker, second by. I'll second it, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Marge, you want to talk about the next thing, through waiver?
It was submitted by Joe Goshen, do we want to wait for, do we want, Joe's not here, do we want to?
Joe wanted to see here.
Is he global enterprise?
Yes.
He's one of the submitted one, but.
Okay.
I don't know that we have any other option besides.
And global assets, so it was beautiful. Same for John, okay.
Well, we'll jump over and go to a distribution decision on DD twenty main three, same thing, same thing. So then we'll have to go repairs.
Yeah, and this, this is the repair request, we actually talked about it during the hearing and stuff. Um, when we had Spencer here about the other repairs that were going to be done on the east side of town. I didn't realize we didn't have a piece of paper for it, so this is. Just to kind of follow that up.
Yeah, in the photo.
Yep, on the east side of Lakota.
Yep. Anybody got any questions on the grand repair in the photo with the trees and. Bulb underneath the railroad and to refresh your memory, it's how I've been obtained.
Right, for quite a while.
Yeah. So would I, would entertain a motion for, some, for, to allow Mr. Stecker to do his repair? On a function? All sub one. That was Josh and Carter. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously.
Thanks.
We are up to then, discussion with our auditors.
Next week, we have a bunch of hearings scheduled. At eight thirty, we have the budget amendment hearing, and then approving the resolution for the budget amendment. Amendment hearings, at eight thirty-five, we have the. Uh, open the sealed bids for the farm lease, and then awarding the bids for the farm lease. And then we have bid letting for DD sixty sub four trail improvement. That's all we have so far on the agenda for next week. Today, our office is open until five o'clock PM for elections. And it's the last day to. Uh, withdraw as a candidate for the city school election or subject to. The city schools, we will be open till five, um, we have set up and. Made available our new Facebook page for the Sioux County Audit Office, um. Which we have been putting election stuff on there, we, we, it was opened right before, um, we closed the courthouse, so that was posted on there, we got a lot of. Good reviews of it, um, and so far, election reviews have been pretty good, so we're hoping that this will be a good way to. To reach people, so if you want to go on that site and like it, follow it, sure, please feel free to do that, because the more people in Sioux County we reach, the. The better, the better it would be, the more useful it would be.
Very sure, aye.
And then.
I'm sure.
Um, we have the. Security. Donna has a plan to do the security, or your answer is security planning for the, for the courthouse coming up, um. We thought about maybe postponing it until after January. With everything happening upstairs with, you know, um, new doors and new security, um, we thought that you'd be, um. Ousing the courthouse to all, to the public, so that all employees can go through that, know what our changes are, and do. Have, um, law enforcement come in and do, um, a security training for all of us, might be there, um. And just doing a quick sit down, tell everybody what to do, but. Donna wanted me to mention that to you and see what you guys thought, if you want to go ahead with, with what's scheduled here, or if you want to postpone it until January, we can look at something bigger.
I, I think doing more thorough thing would be more useful.
Okay.
And we can do it before January, so we're not in the middle of budgets and everything.
Whatever.
But, yeah, I, whatever works.
Then it will be complete, you know, we'll know.
What?
Yeah.
The way they need to respond.
Yeah.
How do we have to, where to go, there's. See how.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll work.
Okay. I think that is probably him, we haven't heard anything about, um, elders in community, they're still reviewing our handbook, so as soon as, uh. We hear back from them, we'll put that on the agenda, but they're still reviewing that, so. That's all.
Jack, do you have any meetings last?
Yeah, I had a early childhood yesterday, started at eight o'clock with that hot, approved forty-five thousand dollars for Palo Alto County. Uh, kids program. And then we had finance committee meeting, went through all the budgets and carryovers and everything. And then went into the general meeting. And, uh, um. Moved all, all of the changes, the forty-five thousand dollars for that well to county. And at the end, we had three program reports, we had Wilson for Cassuth Growing Healthy Kids. Uh, program, update, shared home, uh, from a healthy beginnings, athletic, aim program report. Shelley, Sketchy, Skate, Skate, I can't, it's S K J E I E, I don't think I can pronounce her name. She's with Sue, but she gave it to court, for that, for that, and I need to. This is. I guess, just normal. They have forty kids, it then give a tuition assistance to. Yeah. So, it's got in.
Pardon?
Uh, I, well, we had a North Iowa community activity last week. Last week, I missed that with. Everything went out last week, um, but it was mostly in going over. Insurance, updating health insurance stuff and all that exciting things, so, um, I don't know. That, that particular committee. You, you sit there, they don't even ask for no votes, so it's, uh, uh, you know, sometimes it's, I don't know how, how much of a difference you make. But, uh, I think that was mostly what it was, was talking about was, uh, health insurance. Been talking with Cindy over there, so. Uh, I do have a care connections meeting this afternoon, we'll be going over, um, new contracts with Horizons. Unlimited and then Prairie Ridge, um, with mental health services and. As well as we have a couple of project requests from Upper Des Moines, Opportunity and, and the Palo Alto Wellness Suicide Prevention Program. Um, and then hearing updates from different departments and things, so. So, yeah, that's. And I, I don't know if we touched on last week, uh, but just went down, it was two weeks ago, we went down to. Uh, training, how, on House File seven eighteen, um, Tammy and, and Christie and myself and Kyle. Um, we're all down there for that, and that was, that was very good, I thought it was helpful and explained a lot, and it's a lot to take in for how we're going to. Look at assessments and budgets and stuff this year, so that's, but I, I was glad I went.
Josh? I had no meetings last week, just our normal discussion. So. I applied stuff for some people. But it. Thank.
I had, um, Central Iowa on, say, JDC on Friday, um. We had. Some discussion about a possible solar project, um, they've been looking at that for a while, but it might be something that'd be. Worthwhile at this point in time, or it was just brief discussion, um. And then had quite a bit of discussion about detention counseling billing, um. Think there's some. Confusion on what the difference is between that and just. Normal responsibilities of staff of de-escalation, so we ended up stopping that. For members, affiliates and non-members, so for everyone. And. It was good meeting, but it was a long one, it was almost three hours, so. But, I think that's most of it.
Do you have anything else but summit, and now they're asking what are we going to do, and I don't know what we should do in the county? With the new rulings that. Might be able to stop, the only one we could stop, but there's one more, if you didn't zone it correctly. I hope you read the last comments.
Comments from who?
From. The summit, or from the Shelby hearing, that we can't control anything with safety or zoning, but you can with. The, I mean, with safety, but you can with zoning, if the zoning committee were to meet and. Claim that summit, or that navigator didn't meet the zoning recommendation requirements.
I think there's a lot of aspects to that, but I don't know. You talking from the Shelby Court decision?
Yeah.
I'm. Not well versed on those specifics, I guess, but, um. I think. Biggest thing now is to see what comes out from the. Utility Board hearings, because I think they should be getting close to finishing up. I think there's some landowner testimony yet, but.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
Yeah, so.
I, I think what you're getting at here is zoning in regards to type of. Uh, land use rather than setbacks, because that's what the Shelby County case, pretty much said you cannot.
Use setbacks.
Use setbacks, that's not something that, uh, your counties have jurisdiction over, but. But, I mean, that's kind of what you're getting at, is loan, not for that purpose. You know what I mean, that? Yeah.
Which I think that would apply to both pipelines.
It would have to, I mean.
Yeah, but we'd have an open goal summit, because they're not going to take any CO2 off of, like, planning, or off an ethanol plant in this county.
Oh, sure. That's true.
Good morning.
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 Did I interrupt that guy?
Yep, you can interrupt.
Uh, this place, Stevens, waiting down to take care of some business, but I thought I'd give you the opportunity to introduce everybody. Um, Mark, Morgan, and Tammy Eaton, Tammy is the auditor. Um, Roger Jarks, Kyle Stecker, Josh Wacter, uh, Carter Nath, and Jack Platt, so. Just as a official, give me an opportunity to, so, okay, thanks.
Yep, thanks. So, think about it, I don't know what we can do there. More toward cases, yep.
I believe they're appealing the Shelby County one.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I don't know the status on that, but I believe they're appealing it.
Well, they have in North Dakota and South Dakota, they're appealing that too, and they haven't got a.
No, I mean, I think Shelby County is.
Yeah. We are up to discussion, decision on the waiver for DD four, lot eleven. For all who requested. Open for discussion. Joe, do you ask?
Yeah, I just, uh, I just put that on the agenda, because one guy off, it's in job field.
Why don't you come up, boys, so we, so we can hear.
Oh. I just, uh, I thought that, uh, as you're letting one guy off, you should let everybody, if they ask for it. You should treat everybody the same. That's all, and that's why I put on you agenda.
Marge, have we gotten any other requests?
We would be interested. And, wait a minute. Of course, nobody knows, but.
I thought you could probably.
Yeah, we've done it in the past, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what we acted on last week, was the request.
So, I don't know that we have to do any action on this today, because you did it last week, right?
We allowed us for that.
We did it before it's legit, I know. Would there be any difference in the waivers? Between situation, I don't know the whole situation.
I didn't read it during any, as sure as a book, from last week's, I'm kind of lost. Oh. I don't know what we did last week on it.
Next week, we had a, my owner who had requested on the training floor, but I'm hoping to. Um, to possibly have a waiver. And. The board agreed for that one, because only one percent of that, that.
So that waiver was at five percent, and?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else in particular for that waiver that?
That was, we did ten years.
Ten years, yeah, ten years, okay.
Yeah.
What would have been to you, whether it was on?
Yeah. On dream for, for lot eleven, if you, you made it for everybody, or just the one? There was only one request last week, but you didn't limit it.
We just approved it for.
We approved it, and then we'll have to prove it for another one today.
For, for anyone, anyone who would request one for that. Like, making a blanket one.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
What date did you put on it, then, for? Yeah, to be done, I mean, you, you will have to have a date on.
Well.
September thirtieth, this one.
Is that?
Yeah, it would have to be. Yeah, it would have to be this week.
Is that what the board wishes to do?
That's when March would need it for paperwork, so.
Right, you want it before September thirtieth or after thirtieth?
Thirtieth.
Before the thirtieth, because that's, that's a Saturday, so close the business on the twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth, so you want to do it to twenty ninth, you don't want to do it on the thirtieth.
No, close the business twenty ninth.
So I would entertain a motion to that effect, ten years, five percent. Ending on September twenty ninth.
At the five percent's already set with the warrants, so I don't think we need that in the motion, but I would make that for. Motion for anyone for ten years. And ending the twenty ninth, that close a business.
Carter, you want a second there?
I can do that.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then we are up to. D D twenty, main three, twenty fifteen assessment on main two.
Okay, it's a reason, well, that's because of. What was going on with D D four, that too, we have to back those bills and stuff. And um. If you, if you look at the official bill, I said, put a map in there for you. If you can follow along, you might want to pull it out, so you can watch. As I go through the presentation. On my bill, they talked about this train twenty lap two H, main one, that's what they asked the money for. That'd be this bill here that Spencer sends out. And so, I went and. Took a look at where that was at, and the reason I. I. voted that, going through all my bills, is because I had done a little investigation on this. Train assessment fall twenty thirteen on D D twenty. And if you go down, where it's in blue there. They charge two to, two different. How much on trucks, and then they transferred that money. To uh, funds number fifty one, one oh three and fifty one, one oh four. And if you look at that, I have that fund in here, that is fund fifty one, one oh four, that's got the same legal description on it. That my bill had, so then I went to the flat map. That'd be your map here, and it's highlighted in yellow. And I said, well, geez, you know, I don't have any ground in there. So I approached these people and I'm, I'm wanting my own, the bill. redistributed, because that, that was, I don't want any ground up there. My first deal. So then, when I approached the autograph, and they sent me this work request out. And maybe this one right here. That's full process here. And the problem we have with this, I don't have a problem with it, you know, look, I know this work will be done at one time, I just don't know when it was, it was built out. Um. It had to be, I put it in on twenty thirteen, May, that's a little tight for you guys to get it filled on, so it probably is where it got filled out in twenty fourteen or something. Sometime after that. So when you look at the legal description or the description on the. On the uh, work order, where was in fifty foot of Union Street Wildlife Fence, so I highlighted that with. On your map. And where that work was done is where the blue arrow is pointing. Well, that's. That's D D twenty. Main two. Look that up. So what happens is, is they just decided to throw that on main three. And so that's a disproportionate. We paid a disproportionate amount of bits. The graph we covering, everybody on the. On sections nine, fifteen, sixteen, twenty one, twenty two and twenty three. That's where that should have been spread. Instead of. Instead of on main three. So. I don't know. This is kind of a training program for you new guys. And at the new monitor, this is all happened before, and it just so happened, got this last two and fourth thing going on, I was going through my bills and I. And. Emoted this legal description, so I think something should be done about that, and I think the property owners on main three were unfairly. Covered. For the work gift, and that's if this work order. Is, has, had not been spread before.
I did hear the last word.
That's if this work order hasn't been spread before, I had quite a guess doing that. Trying to think one more time before your time, and I'm not trying to. I'm just trying to straighten the bill up here, that's all I'm doing.
Well, your clarification, Joe, just so I understand. So. The first thing that you talked about, um. I think March talked to you about. That. There was a mistake made and then that was changed, correct, that was fixed that year, twenty fifteen, in twenty fifteen, or do you, like, can you remember that, that that was directed in twenty fifteen?
Yeah, it's kind of weird off.
And also explain that you agree with.
That's right, well, no, I, you know, yeah, I just want to leave from your office. From the stuff I see coming out of your office. I, I just, you know, this, this is the official bill I got, okay, that's what I go by. And that's what alerted me to, okay? So now this other field here. I'm not going to agree with what you're explaining, because it, that still is not. Um, spread to the right district, if you look at the work order, this is the work order that you sent with that explanation.
And so you think it should have been spread to.
Main two.
To instead of main.
Yeah, it's clear, if you look to. Take a real close, we're fifty foot back, cement structure. And from the Union Slough, so fifty foot, when you look at where main three starts, that's just about a half mile west of there, I mean, I got it highlighted on the map. So when you start looking at that, look. If you're, if you redo it. People up on section nine, sixteen, fifteen, twenty two. And twenty one are kind of the assassin.
So, just so you can hear what we're talking about, so I'm going to pass this out down so that you guys can see it too. The map that was done at the time shows here main three and main two. Uh, which is kind of confusing the way it looks, March thinks that it is possible that Joe is right, that it should have been main two, when it's at main three. So that is something we will have to look at and see if we can. Go over it with Joe and see what we can come up with, um, if that's okay with you, March, and that's okay with you guys. Um. It is. The math's the greatest, so, um, but I think it does deserve looking into. The bill you got was in two thousand fifteen, is that right?
Yeah, you know, I wouldn't have even looked at it, that just, you know, so, you know, and then, and the only reason I noticed this description is because of. What I've been seeing on. On um. Up there, you know, on your spreadsheet out of twenty thirteen, I wouldn't have looked into that, because we have. Where you spread from there, nine hundred and fourteen, you didn't do it. Nine hundred and fourteen thousand is spread up there for, and this is the one you want, and so then I looked up every one of these. The rest of the section, and then they go and transfer it out to one hundred and fifty one, one oh four, which is what we're talking about, we're talking nine hundred and fourteen thousand. On that little piece of pipe there in yellow up here. That's a lot of money. You could do the whole way for that, just by this side, you know, that's so, was it on the main, so it looks a little funny.
Who's that? What's it, I think it's.
That would be a lot of time at the time.
For us at the time, but I didn't, so they, so Tom's learning.
Tom's scientist.
Would you be able to, what can it with us?
Well, we don't know, because we'd have to, the rights don't figure out where he did the work.
Actual location.
Yeah, actually, because it would make a big difference on.
And we, and we don't have GPS coordinates from the repair, like we do. Right there, yeah.
It could have been on this.
Why? Well, that's, that's the border. Right.
What do we need to do to make sure it's being go to the appropriate?
Then he's talking D D eighty, main three on his damn bill.
But.
That puts hits the border, so.
I, I realize that, but how do you know?
Talking about open ditch also, it's something that's so. Is.
Yeah, I. We probably need to.
When we were farming, farming time, we had private, I had to go through that box. So there's.
Yeah, you got private tile that dumps into there.
Yeah. Believe that's a common name, counting, let's say.
That's going to the. For main.
At that box.
Which. On the map here, I mean, those, those move. So it shows the label that moves, that would have been before we had digital maps, so that was the label on. Hard paper.
Gotcha, yeah, I can see where that was good.
I mean, it's. You guys see that, but. Yeah. I would say talking to it, so find out location and. And look at the actual invoice and see what we can. Come up with from there.
What is D D eighty thirty? That's what it says, I know. It's, it calls it D D eighty, main three, if you look at the. Your repair request. D D eighty, that we know that includes in the main two thousand.
Well, let go. You want to see the map, Joe? You want to show that?
Yeah, see, I think main two, well, I was good down, it's three turns there, so it's the same map I got, and it's the same map that I gave you. I hope it's any clearer, I knew we're now, but that wasn't present at the time that this was, so you got a company, you know. But I understand from what was described on the bill, it's way different. And, and that's what alerted me to it.
Okay.
We don't know what size this tile is either, main two, do we?
Sixteen there.
This is twenty two.
Yes, and that's like.
On the electronic map, it shows sixteen here.
Was it showing there?
Not all this right though.
Well, I know, that's. The other section doesn't have a size.
That's ten inch of. Other.
They had a sixteen on main three, according to this map that I gave you.
Right.
And then, I don't know, what does it say right down there by the slough there, they got?
Twenty two.
That says twenty two there.
Yeah, but there's a box there that you.
Yeah, there's a box, everything feeds into a box, then it goes, then it goes across fence. You know, open, it's kind of like an open ditch.
There's a box right here.
It, does that say thirty?
I think it's twenty two, you have that. I, I'd look at, uh. Your map, because it's not highlighted, the highlight kind of. Takes away, I think it's twenty two.
How big a tile did you end up going in there, is that an eighteen? Twenty four?
Yeah. And we, we basically, well, basically we take the place of last three. Is our, our private tile, the same as last three.
What goes to where your dad used to live?
No, well, there is a little part there that you can see, it goes to twenty one, that was at Crest House Place, that was always where.
Yeah. The best thing I can say today is we're not going to take any action, we'll research it a little further. Uh, no action will be taken, let the record show that.
Yeah. March and I, we'll look into this.
If you can see that a little bit better.
You jump ears from us. By the end of the week, give us a call.
All in the week.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to get some down, I think this week.
Fine, I can get this till the end of the year.
Oh.
Maybe, I know, I know you guys business, I won't.
Yeah, so.
But give us a call, uh, and check in and see how we're doing, but we will check into it, see what we can find out. Check with Rachel and see where that's, but.
You want me to check it right?
But you can, if you want to, we'll check also, but it doesn't hurt for both of us to.
As we want to all get together.
And, and I think we can do that after we get information, I think, and do help, if they all sit down, they say that again. As they pay.
Yeah.
Something else.
You never paid an outlet fee for that private tile?
Well, we should get off the district, like, take out, take those, because we got a long time.
Yeah.
We maintain it ourselves.
That, that shouldn't change your schedule for the ditch, it would have to be for tile.
Mm-hmm.
Did everybody fair, we have a lot of private, we have three privates going in there, and if you roll that on a ball, it's like three games.
There's separate schedules for tiles and ditches.
Telling you how you create one guy, and now we got, we're still, we're still paying full blown on, on main three, okay? Not like Jay Goshen.
Anything else come before the board? Anybody thinking anything else for you to do today? Not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Stecker, all those in favor, please say aye, aye, opposed, motion carried.